Okay, yeah, so I tried to word it like, like the same way how NHJ has it worded.
Right.
So I know it kind of, reading it might be a little confusing, so if you don't like, understand the question right away or anything, no big deal.
Okay.
But I just wanted to make sure that this matched as much as possible from what NHJ had.
Right.
Without exactly copying the question because of, you know, copyright stuff, but, um, yeah, so. It has most of the modules on here and, and I know you said safety, um, and like processing was the things that you are having trouble with?
Cause every time when I take the test, like I didn't do so well, which is, you know, alright, cause like I knew, I knew some of the ones that I got wrong and I was like, okay, I need to really focus on those. But when like after I take it, it'll show you like what sections you need to work on and it said, yeah, safety and compliance. And I believe processing and maybe special collections, or maybe it was routine blood collection too.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, yeah, so, um, where do you want to start?
Uh. Let's do patient prep hundred.
Okay. And are you able to read that okay?
Yeah. A flip is instructing a patient to collect a twenty-four year, twenty-four hour urine sample. When should the patient start collecting their urine?
And I spelled the word wrong.
Okay. Um. Wouldn't it like be at the beginning of the day, morning? Or am I thinking of a different?
No, you are right. So it's, um, it's the second point of the day, but it would be, it's still considered in the morning.
Right.
Okay. But I think what you were saying, like the one where you have to collect it first thing in the morning, then for the urine pregnancy test.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Um, which one do you want to do next?
Uh, let's try six, one hundred.
Which one?
Safety and compliance one hundred.
Okay. Uh, what solution should a phlebotomist use while cleaning up a cerebral spinal fluid spill?
Um. I wanna say, but I believe there's like some other word for it.
You, I, you're cut out just a little bit. What was that?
I wanna say bleach, but I feel like there's some other word for it.
Yeah, it is bleach, um, so chlorine bleach.
Right.
You're right, yep. Awesome.
I'm actually getting right.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do processing for one hundred.
Alright. So this is one that I, I think is kind of worded a little bit weirdly. Where I said, where should a blood sample for a lactic acid test be kept before transporting?
Mm-hmm.
What I'm kind of asking is, um, because some, some lab tests have to sit at room temperature for fifteen minutes or thirty minutes when, uh, you want to do certain testing and then certain, other ones have to be kept, uh, cold and things like that. So it's kind of asking like, should it be kept at room temperature? Should it be refrigerated or should it be frozen or, you know, like how, where would you want to keep it, uh, to make sure it stays at the right temperature? That's kind of what it's asking.
I believe lactic acid, you wanna keep it frozen.
So not quite, you wanna keep it in the refrigerator?
Okay.
Cold, but it doesn't need to be, um, like a frozen sample.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, let's try routine blood collection for one hundred.
Alright.
What may be the vein collapsing during puncture? Uh.
And this is another one that kind of, I think, um, because to me like when NHJ, it should kind of be more like, there are all sorts of things that can make a vein collapse.
Right.
But it should be more like, uh, what is something that the phlebotomist does that can cause a vein to collapse during a puncture?
Right. Um. I feel like them is if you leave the tourniquet on for too long. No. Not quite.
It has to do with the tourniquet, but it is if you put, if you tie it too tightly.
Oh, yeah.
Cause then blood is not flowing through, um, like it nee- it needs to be. So then basically, uh, sucked out all the blood that it can hold. Um, and then if the tourniquet is too tight, it's hard for that to obtain more blood flow.
Right. I actually have, I have a scar when a nurse tried to draw blood for me. I don't know what she did wrong, but I've got a scar from it. And sometimes I pick at it and I think it's like a little pimple, but it's a scar.
It's kind of like a, like a little knot?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably, yeah, I'm not sure exactly what she did, but most likely, um, you know, that's from some scar tissue, um, maybe had like a hematoma or something, um.
I might've, but sometimes I bruise after giving blood.
Yeah.
My veins are small, so sometimes people, like some nurses try to use like a syringe or whatever else. You usually without using a needle.
Yeah.
No, you have to use a butterfly needle. My veins are too small.
Special collection one hundred.
Oh, hi, Uriah.
Hi, Uriah.
Hi.
Hold on, let me actually, we can refresh this and then do two teams. Perfect.
Me and Caitlin are on a team together.
Oh, hold on, Lily's coming too.
Then I'm by myself, fine.
I was like, no, Lily should be coming.
What's that?
I was saying, no, Lily should be coming.
Yeah.
I was doing pretty by myself.
Three teams. Caitlin, don't, don't do this, Caitlin.
Okay, Uriah, you said you wanted to do special collections for a hundred?
No, let's do, yeah, forget it.
Alright. And I, I specifically went on NHJ and took lessons from NHJ, so they're kind of, cause the way NHJ works things is kind of funky. So if there's one question that pops up, that's kind of like, what exactly is it asking, I'll kind of explain a little bit more. But I just wanted it to match like what NHJ had, so that way it's like, when you go to do the test, they're like, oh yeah, this is pretty much, like that's why that question was worded that way or whatever, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, so what additive, uh, would you need to use when you're doing a white blood cell peripheral blood smear? Or what additive in the vacuum cleaner would you be drawing for this?
The purple?
Yes, the purple tube is the one that has the E D T.
E D T.
Yes.
Can you, can you elaborate on why? Oh!
So the E D T is the one.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, you're good.
Just wants to, okay, sorry, I thought I exited off the meeting. I always make that sound when I accidentally do something. Okay.
The E D T additive is the one that helps blood to not clot. So that way you can, uh, like a blood count and a blood smear. Cause if the blood clots, then you can't count the blood cells.
Yeah. So E D T keeps it, like, it keeps it from clotting?
Yes.
Okay. Let me get my book real quick.
Alright, Lily, do you want to make a selection?
Yeah, safety and compliance for hundred.
You, I'm sorry, you said one hundred?
I can't hear her. I changed it on that phone. I'd be telling her to go on through the computer. She'll be listening.
Which one did you say? I'm sorry.
Type it in the chat.
Four hundred, safety and compliance.
Okay, hold on, wait, four hundred?
Yeah.
Okay.
You heard.
So what bloodborne pathogen are you most at risk for? Uh, or what are, are you most at risk for contracting if receive a needle stick injury?
Hepatitis B or HIV?
What's that?
Hepatitis B or HIV?
It's hepatitis B.
B.
Yep.
Lily, we can't hear you. You gonna have to either type it or get on through your computer.
Okay, Starla, uh, you get to pick.
Uh, let's do processing for one hundred.
Okay.
Oh, we already did that.
Yes, we did. Okay, my bad, you already got, okay.
Wait, I didn't know, wait, I didn't know the answer. What is it? Where should a blood sample for a lactic acid be kept for transportation?
And basically what this one's asking is like, some specimens have to be left at room temperature. Um, some have to be kept cold or frozen. So it's kind of asking like more of like what temperature does this type of blood sample need to be kept at, but I just wanted to word it the way NHJ had it worded, so.
Uh, is it like the same thing, kind of like in that area with ammonia?
Uh. I think that one has to be frozen, so.
Ammonia has to be frozen?
I think so.
I believe so, cause I remember,
Hold on.
I did like some kind of question or had a question over that and I believe it said it has to be frozen.
But it had to be cold, not frozen.
I don't know, I could be wrong.
Hmm.
But this one just has to be kept cold in the refrigerator?
Yeah, cause I only said frozen, but it's, it's only cold.
Starla, did we do this one? Oh, we did, yes.
You explained it to me, cause I said something about the tourniquet being on for too long, but you said it's too tightly and I was like, oh yeah, I remember now.
Yeah, a tourniquet being on for too long can cause, uh, hemolysis.
Mm-hmm.
That's what we, okay, okay, sorry, so, um, you get to pick a different one, sorry.
It's okay. Uh, let's do safety and compliance for two hundred.
Okay.
She'll be back.
Phlebotomy technician receives a needle stick injury while performing a venous puncture. What will need to be included in the report? Um. I don't know why I can't. Hmm.
Do you have any guesses?
Um. Wouldn't one of the, the date and time of when it happened?
That would be one of them, mm-hmm.
Uh. For some reason, I can't think of any answers.
Okay, Uriah, do you wanna try to answer this one?
I'm gonna just say maybe like, um, the, the date or around the time. Um. What? Receive a needle stick injury. I guess maybe some of the patient's information. Um.
Mm-mm, I have that, sorry.
I guess your follow-up procedure, I don't know.
You want to make sure that you include the department work that you heard.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Uriah, your turn, you get to pick.
Uh, patient prep three hundred. Patient is processing the blood sample of a patient who informed them that they had meat and cheese the day prior to the, to the. Meat and cheese? Man, I did not read this part, huh?
So this, this is one where like, if you think of like meat and cheese would be mostly fatty. So what would, like if you are, if you think of something that contains mostly fat, what would?
So that's what I'm saying, high cholesterol, I don't know, high cholesterol? Um.
Yes, but like what would, as far as like physical appearance of, once the tube has been set up, you have the separation. It would, it would be like what the physical appearance of the sample would kind of look like.
You mean like the, between the plasma and the actual blood separation?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, maybe more plasma?
That's what I'm thinking. I feel like it'd be, you'd see more plasma than you would blood.
No?
No.
I'm not completely sure either, so.
Then we don't know.
So the specimen would be what's called like, you know? That's not would be kind of cloudy.
Oh, oh, yes.
That makes more.
Um. Caitlin, Lily says she's trying to enter the meeting again.
Oh, I wonder if it's, um, hold on. Is it locked? Let me unlock it. There we go.
You're welcome, Lily.
Okay. So actually, Caitlin came right back on time, committed an error turn.
Huh?
It's actually not her turn, so Caitlin came right back on time.
Okay.
Um, special collections five hundred?
Oh, wow.
Alright.
Aw, man, what?
What blood type is known as the universal recipient?
Five hundred, that's not fair.
O negative.
No, does anyone?
Alright.
Next one?
Isn't it O, ugh.
This is, this is the one who, this is the universal recipient.
Yeah, recipient, O, O negative is the universal donor.
Yeah, it's the universe, O negative is the universal donor and then recipient, wouldn't that be A B?
Yes.
Yeah.
Would be type A B, universal recipient.
Wait, hold on, let me, my blood type, guys, hold on.
You guys wanna know something cool?
What's that?
My stepdad is actually O negative.
I am too.
So he donated.
You are too?
He donated plasma and blood a lot.
You didn't think that's something to tell us, Caitlin?
I did. Oh, but I am O negative?
Yes.
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, why? I don't even know what, I don't know what my blood type.
Blood, then they will usually send you, uh, like a card that says what your blood type is. So that way, like if you go, say, uh, you go to Walmart one day and they have like the, the bus that's out there where they have a blood donation center, they can just scan it. So, and then they can kind of tell like, oh, you know, we already have enough, uh, type C blood or whatever.
I think I'm A positive.
Would you like figure out your blood type though, because like with me, since I don't like, I don't drink enough water and stuff and my veins are pretty small, I don't go and donate blood. And also because I'm underweight.
Yeah.
Well, like I've wanted to donate blood in the past, I just never been able to.
Yeah, I mean, for, cause sometimes patients think when we take their blood, that we automatically do a blood typing test, which they don't. So you could ask your doctor to like order a blood type test.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but yeah, that's the easiest way for people to find out what their blood type is, is to donate blood and then they'll tell you what your type is.
Okay, I probably do that.
I think when they did it at Job Corps, that's how I found out mine.
Mm-hmm.
They sent it to me or something like that. And it, you know, I believe it was.
Mm-hmm. They also tell you when it gets used.
Aw, man, I'm A positive, that's wack.
I didn't know they told, I just, I get emails all the time telling me when they're coming. Because they're gonna use my blood, so.
Well, I asked for them, uh, they was like, did you wanna know your, didn't do that? I was like, yes.
Mm-hmm.
So I'mma die.
No, because you can re, you can receive O negative, or you said you're A, you're A positive?
Yes.
So you can receive O negative, O positive, uh, A negative and A positive. You just can't get B or A and B.
That's wack.
So you can still, well, I only can get O negative blood, so if they're out of O negative.
I was like, oh yeah, you can't get, that's the only thing about being A, you know? That's crazy.
I.
Yeah, you're universal, can only get O negative blood.
Yep.
I don't fully understand how the blood typing thing works, if you can receive more, like, I understood up until you said that you can receive more than one type of blood. How does that work?
So. Yeah, it's kind of confusing, like to, um, I don't know if I'm gonna answer this like the way that you're asking it necessarily, um. But basically like with, with the blood type, what's it have, like the positive type? About like, you know, the, the RNA in your blood, so, um, if someone has, uh, if someone has a positive type, they can also receive a negative blood type. But if someone has a negative blood type, uh, they can't receive any of the positive blood. If Uriah was A negative?
Positive.
O negative and A negative and wouldn't be able to get O positive. I don't know if that answered.
O positive.
What's that?
Oh, so I can't get O positive?
No.
Die if I do?
I know, you're, you're A positive, so you can, but I was saying if you were A negative, you cannot get any of the like O positive, A positive, or. Yeah, so if you were A negative, you couldn't get O positive or A positive. You can only get O negative and A negative, but since you're O, or I'm sorry, since you're A positive, you can get O negative, O positive, A negative or, or A positive, so you can.
Okay, so as a negative, I can only receive positives, oh wait, negatives? So as a negative, I can only receive negative, but as a positive, I can receive both?
Yes.
And then if I, if I was a negative and I received positive, would I die?
I, no, not necessarily, like, you wouldn't necessarily.
Not necessarily.
It's. Okay. I mean, basically like, it's kind of like when you have a patient who receives like kidney. Sometimes their body rejects that.
Oh, that's, okay, that's okay.
Like body then is attacking, so it's like your body kind of triggers an autoimmune response. So it's basically attacking itself, cause it recognizes that there's something foreign that shouldn't be there. Um. So I'm not exactly sure what they do if that happens.
Resuscitate me.
Well, I mean,
Not.
But it's saying like if the, if say like you were A, uh, negative and then they certainly gave you A positive blood, I'm not sure like what the process is, like if there's a certain medication they give you or if they, I'm not sure what they do.
Listen Caitlin, I want you to know if anything ever happens to me while you're around, resuscitate me.
Okay.
Have to worry, I do not have a do not resuscitate thing.
I can also donate blood for you, so.
It all calls save me. Sacrifice yourself.
Oh my goodness.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
It's really not.
Yeah, I know, as far as sacrificing yourself, like no, don't do all that, save me if you can, please.
Don't, don't listen to her, don't listen to her, Caitlin.
Um, Starla, I think it's your turn to pick and while you're picking, I'm going to consult my mom on that question.
Okay, uh, let's see. Let's do safe compliance for three hundred. While using a centrifuge device catches on fire, what class of fire would this be? Uh, I don't fully understand the question.
So there's the, uh, different classes of fire, where like class A, class B, class C and class D, um, which are separated based on like what type of fire it is. So if it was like a grease fire, that falls under its own classification. If it's an electrical fire, it falls under its own classification. But, but it's asking which, uh, which one of those between A, B, C and D would that, uh, something like a centrifuge, which is a electronic, or not electronic, electrical device, um, which class would that fall under?
Uh-huh. I don't remember what class electrical fire is, but I'm, I'm gonna just say B.
No, does someone else wanna guess?
Yeah.
Suck.
Um, type C?
Yes.
I was actually.
A is the wood, right?
A is, yes, I believe A is the, is like wood and.
And then B is like, uh, like, um, is it gas or electrical? It's like the, going to stove?
Hold on, I mean, I'm, uh.
I forgot. I need to refresh.
I'm trying to remember this too, so. Um, so class A is things like wood, hold on, this is a very. Um, so class A, solid combustible materials like paper, wood, uh, textiles. Class B is flammable liquid, so like your gas, oil, um. Class C.
Is gas.
Wait, okay, so.
That's for the stove and stuff, right?
NHJ like completely wrong or what is going on here?
Yeah, cause it's.
Now, it's class C is electrical things. I don't know why.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah, I know class C is electrical, I knew that, cause I learned that when I was in, uh, high school, so. There it is, there's one that says class C is electrical. That's my.
Would be like natural gas and, uh, combustible materials.
I, I remember, but in high school, I just completely forgot the different classes and what they were for.
I used a fire extinguisher before.
Yeah, I have a hard time remembering those too.
Yeah.
And my mom was like, get the extinguisher, didn't you just learn it? I was like, yeah, this is my time to shine.
I remember like, I always did really well in science, cause I'm just really good at it. And so I'd come home from school and like tell my parents and be like, guess what I learned today? And they're just like, um, okay.
But did I already give you points for this question?
Yeah, she's fine. She's good. She's fine. Don't worry about it. Okay, we're supposed to be working together Caitlin and you've not helped me one.
Yeah, come on.
Your right, you get to choose, uh.
Seeing two hundred. Bro, I know I plugged them up too.
Alright. So what is something, when a patient collects a urine drug screen? What is something you have to do in front of the?
What in the, uh, let me think when I did it.
What's all the sound in the background, right?
And I was, um.
Does anyone else wanna guess?
Let's start. I already got one.
Okay, so what action must be taken in front of a patient collecting a urine drug screen? I'm not gonna try to like talk about my drug screen test, but when I was there, they were right in front of me. And I think you'll want to be going through the process or like examining if. You are good or you're not right in front of the patient. Do they know? Or am I thinking of something that's completely different?
I mean, yes, but this is more so like. The patient can't say something was done to it or altered after they gave it to us.
Okay, um, so putting like writing out the label on, in front of them and putting it on computer.
I was like, cause the only thing I remember them doing is writing in the paper when I do a drug screen.
Yeah, she was writing on the paper and she was like, oh, you're good. And I was like, oh, okay.
So this is more so that way they can say too that they didn't, um. I don't know how to say this without giving the answer.
Hold on, can I try again?
Yes.
You write on the label and you put it um to where it would be obviously like one of the tamper proof label where you put it on the cap. And on the rest of it afterwards. So that's what I meant. I just didn't say it right.
Yes, you have to make sure, you have to seal the sample with a tamper evident or tamper proof. Uh. Type container. So you have to show them that once they leave. That that sample is not going to be altered in any way. So they can't say like, oh, after I left. You guys added something to it or whatever.
She cheated.
Cause they can't see that you tampered with the sample, so. Okay, really it's your turn to pick a, uh. It, well, yeah, it's your turn to pick one.
Hmm, processing four hundred.
Okay. So phlebotomy technician gets six filled evacuation tubes, but one of them does not have a label.
Not answer.
What are you supposed to do with the sample that does not have the label?
Reject it.
Yes.
No, no.
You were just, but then what else do you do?
Let me answer Caitlin.
Okay.
You have to redo it.
What?
You have to redo it.
Yes, you have to redo it. So you're gonna have to, you're gonna discard it.
Recollect. Sorry, recollect.
That, that's, uh, same thing, same difference. I know, like you have to.
Hey now, hey.
Yes, she did Caitlin.
Uh, Starla, your turn.
Wait, I don't get a point.
No, Lillian. Thank you.
Well, yes, you do have to, you do have to discard it, but the, the main thing is too is that you do have to recollect the sample. Oh, what just happened? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
I can hear you.
What happened?
She can't hear us.
Caitlin.
No, if you can't end the meeting.
Can leave though.
You're so rude.
Much sometimes, but I love you guys.
We barely even started Starla. You don't wanna see us for real.
Oh, man.
I don't know what's happened, but I'm back.
Okay.
I texted someone, cause I was like, is the video still up? Okay, um. So who got, who answered this question?
No, you just clicked it.
I did, okay, my bad.
For all of us.
Um, whose turn is it?
Um, so I went.
I think it was my turn.
It's Starla's turn.
Okay, Starla, uh, get to pick a subject.
Let's do safe clients for five hundred.
Alright, so when you're doing a blood alcohol test, what antiseptic do you need to use?
I know this one. Why does my mind always blank every time? Something else. I can't think of it. I know the, I just, I can't think of it at the moment.
That's okay. Yoraya or Lily, do you guys wanna answer this one?
How, how, how you click.
Hold on, so what are you guys, like, um, whoever types in the chat first.
Guys, whoever types first.
No, Yoraya, that is not the right one.
Dang it, chlorhexidine.
Hold on a dang second here.
I don't know if I'm spelling this stuff right.
What were you going to say? What's that?
Chlorbalein glycol.
No, you're right, actually was right. It is the chlorhexidine.
Lily told me that had alcohol in it. That's why I didn't go for chlorhexidine first. She told me that I, isn't, don't you use chlorhexidine? We were studying. I was like, don't you use chlorhexidine if you're doing alcohol tests? She's like, doesn't chlorhexidine have alcohol in it too? I was like, oh, I thought that was the alternate, so. Use the first one, sorry.
Chlorhexidine is the one that you use, which is also known as Hiboclenz, which, um. Uh, test. So if you have a patient that is brought in. With, from a, uh, with a police officer and they say they need to have a blood alcohol test done and the patient refuses. Can you still do it?
Yes.
Yeah, or they can have their license.
Thank you.
You can see me run.
Thank you so much. Um, yeah, so you, you can't, even if the patient refuses, and then this is the only time that you can do it. Like it's salt or battery, because it's, usually this happens, like if someone causes an accident. They will have them do a blood alcohol test to make sure they were not intoxicated when that happens. So the patient refuses. Uh, we still can do it because basically it is, uh. That chain of custody. But I'll tell you though, when you have a patient who refuses and you still have to do it, it gets interesting, so. Yeah. Okay, um, Yoraya. Question.
Dad.
What? Yoraya, which one do you wanna go for now?
Uh, routine blood collection, hmm, two hundred. Caitlin. We gotta be, gotta be a team this time. A phlebotomy technician is performing a venipuncture through a hematoma. What should you expect to see in this question? You perform. Venipunctures through hematomas?
You shouldn't and.
I was like, what?
Why should you not, why should you not collect? Or why should you not do the blood draw through a hematoma?
Cause you're gonna have a whole lot of, well, one, it's already a bruise, so you're gonna uh injure the patient. And well, won't there be like, what's it, when the blood cells are breaking up? Broken up?
Yes.
Mollusks.
Okay.
Alright. Patient prep five hundred.
Oh, okay, I see what you're doing here Lily.
Pregnancy test, first thing in the morning.
I hate you. Hate you. Personal for us.
Come on, don't, don't be like this.
Starla, your turn. Processing which one?
For five hundred.
Okay.
Phlebotomist receives a urine drug screen that reads a temp of eighty-five. What must be done for this sample? Um, it's eighty-five degrees Fahrenheit. Wouldn't you want to like refrigerate it? Or is that what it's asked?
Can I try?
No, my hand was up.
Um, it would be tampered with otherwise, cause no urine should be eighty-five degrees.
Yeah, and so if it's, if it's eighty-five degrees, that is too low of a temperature. So you need to then recollect it.
That was not fair Caitlin. My hand was up. I was ready.
I can't see her.
My hand was up first. I was trying to be respectful.
Whoever says it first.
Alright, you wanna play the game Lily?
Why are you getting so high? Stop. You're supposed to be learning.
I am.
Oh, I forgot to give you the points for that last one. There we go, okay, um. Yoraya, your turn.
I gotta add a two. Patient prep four hundred.
So if someone tells you that in the past when they've gotten their blood drawn, they have had a syncopal episode. What position do you wanna place the patient in? Or what? How would you, yeah, what position would you place the patient in? Yes, you remember what that's called?
Um, it's not.
That's not fair.
No, what's not fair is your whole exhibit right now.
That's not fair.
You would have them laying down. It's just called the supine position.
No, she helped you out. Hand was up. I would've got that. I would've got those five hundred points. No, I'm talking about the last one. I'm talking about the last, sorry Caitlin.
Okay, well, I was gonna say, I, I just gave you the points.
Okay, so, um.
It's Starla's turn.
Oh, it's Starla?
No, it is Lily's turn.
Okay, geez, um, patient prep three hundred.
Oh, man.
So when you bring a patient back and you need to confirm what their, their identity, what information do you?
Um, you wanna ask them to give their full name and the date of birth. And potentially a driver's license.
Yes. Alright, now it's Starla's turn.
You got this.
There's only one five hundred left, get it.
Okay, I'll do routine blood collection for five.
You're a hater, Lu.
A phlebotomy technician is performing a venipuncture for a blood test called CBC and PTT. What tube should you select and what is the order and which they should be drawn? I am not good at this. I'm not gonna get this correct.
You wanna try?
Uh, I can try. Okay, so. Let's see, CBC. What tube should you select and, and which order? Um, I wanna say. Red, maybe? Man, red. I'm just naming the off right now. I'm not gonna list them in order. Red. Lavender. I wanna say light blue and gray. And then, and which order? Oh, man. Yeah, I don't know. Somebody else should take it. I don't wanna take forever.
Do you guys wanna, um, who wants to try this one?
Yeah, right, you have it.
Okay, so I know red. So gray, right, so far, red, gray. I'm just listing off the colors. Ruben test, uh. Am I gonna need lavender? And cold, ag- agu- and that's, that's a, we collect that, like what, um. What is the code? Can you tell me what the code one is?
I don't know what that test is, um, but, um. Are you asking like what color tube that is?
No, like, I just wanted to know what to test this, so maybe I can guess the code too.
Let me look it up, cause I'm not quite sure what that is. I've never seen that before.
I haven't.
Seen it? I seen it, I just don't remember it.
What is a?
The red one.
Eclutinins are auto antibodies produced by a person's immune system that mistakenly target red. Cold eclutinins are auto antibodies produced by a person's immune system. Charge red blood cells.
So is it a bacteria?
No.
I'm gonna just try red, blue, lavender, gray.
Lily, did you wanna try it all?
Lily inherent. Caitlin.
Alright, so you wouldn't need a gray one.
Aw, man.
Would you do want a light blue and then two of the serum separator tubes?
That's the, what is the serum separator tube?
The red one is the one that doesn't have an additive. The gold tubes are the ones that have the serum, are the serum separator tubes.
Wait, the what? The gold ones?
The gold or the red and black speckled one.
Okay, oh.
Okay, that makes.
Okay.
The gold and the red and black speckled one are the same. The red and black speckled one holds a larger amount of blood than the gold one.
Yeah, they're longer, right?
What's that?
They're longer, right?
Yeah, so, so basically the the gold tube uh holds five mls of blood or the speckled red and black tube holds eight.
So is that, uh? Sorry, go ahead.
I was just saying, they're still the same additive in those tubes. It's just that one holds a larger volume than the other.
So, is the serum separated tube for the prothamin time test?
The pro time test is the light blue.
Light blue, okay. And what's the two, the serum separated tubes?
So the bilirubin test and the cold aglutinin test.
Yeah, okay, the cold aglutinin test. And then the lavender?
Lavender.
Lavender is for the complete cut blood count, because you're trying to keep it from
clotting.
Okay. I keep getting that confused with the red one. Like I keep thinking the CBC is the red one. But I, for some reason in my head, like the red one isn't clotting and the lavender one is, so I don't know where I got that from.
Yeah, I just, I get the mix.
That's clotting factors in it, but the, the red top does not have any additive in it. The lavender is the one that has E T A in it. Okay, I forgot whose turn it was. It's Rose. Okay.
Routine, no, special collection four hundred.
So when you have a new.
Seventy-two hours after. Was it seventy-two or eighty-eight hours after they're born?
It's, it's between it's uh seventy-two is the maximum.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like.
What is the minimum?
The minimum, uh, I don't know, right after?
Okay, can I answer? Yes. So, um, you wanna do it hopefully in the first forty-eight hours? Preferably, but you can go up to seventy-two.
Okay, what's the minimum?
It's still.
I got the, I got the maximum, what minimum?
Starla, do you want a time?
Um, I just remember it being seventy-two hours after birth. That's what I saw when I saw this question.
Seven hours.
There is, so I'm, I'm not sure.
So you're right, I'm still gonna give you the points, but it's between twenty-four and seventy-two hours after birth. So you want to do it, you don't wanna do it like immediately after birth. You wanna wait at least twenty-four hours, but not more than seventy-two.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, ready? Ooh, processing three hundred. Alright, how long do you have to let a scan before you put it in the centrifuge? Thirty minutes. Not necessarily stand, but how long do you need to let it sit before you put it in the centrifuge? Thirty minutes to an hour. Yep, thirty minutes. Okay, Starla.
Uh, let's do special collections for two hundred.
What, what type is compatible with type O?
When you mean, are you talking about both positive and negative or just negative?
Um, yeah, I mean, just, just in general, like type O, like what, what type is compatible? Like if someone has O blood, what, what type can they get?
Um. O negative. Uh, O positive.
Can they receive anything outside of O type blood?
Huh?
Can someone with O, O type blood receive any other blood type?
Yeah, I believe. So wouldn't it be pretty much almost all the blood types?
No.
No.
Someone else wanna answer? Yeah. Okay, um, O can only receive O. Correct. So type O blood, specifically negative, uh O negative is the universal donor.
Right.
So O negative can only receive O negative, O positive can receive O negative and O positive, but they cannot receive A, B, or A and B.
Oh, yeah.
They can receive uh O. A and B is the universal receiver because they can receive O negative, well, depending on their negative and positive, but they can receive type O, type A, type E, and type A and B. But O, type O is only able to get type O.
Okay.
Um, and also, my mom was not very helpful because I asked her why, uh you know, ta- negative blood types cannot receive positive blood types. And then she just said that blood banks a mystery to her, so. I'm not sure. Okay. Uh, Yuraya.
Routine four hundred.
Okay. So what, if you accidentally puncture the patient's arteries, what do you need to do?
Um, uh. Try to stop the bleeding. So I mean, uh.
And how do you do that?
Good, incident. Stop the bleeding? Pressure?
But how do you?
Wait, stop. Are you asking what, how do I do, how to stop the bleeding?
Yes.
Pressure?
For how long?
Um, I don't know, ten, fifteen minutes?
I mean, you wanna do a minimum of five minutes?
Sorry, I was like, I don't know, five.
Yeah, apply pressure. Do it for a minimum of five minutes, but yeah, usually you wanna have them do it for at least fifteen or for fifteen, but the minimum would be five.
Five.
Alright, last question, and this is gonna be for whoever answers first, so. Is my turn or is that fair?
No, no, this is how we do it every time. You wanna do the neck, the other arm. You wanna do the other arm. You wanna do the left arm. Got the answer right, Caitlin, give me points, Caitlin. No, this is how we play Lily. I know you're newcomer Lily, but this is how we play. Caitlin, can I get my points?
That's not how it is.
Yes, it is. You don't come in here changing stuff. You don't come in here changing stuff, Lily. You don't. I said left arm like thirty times, Caitlin.
Don't forget to turn after I try and fail. Okay, so I, I can't, I'll hear you guys, so make, just type it in the chat.
That's what I just did when they were talking like twice.
Okay, hold on, let me check. Um. It is the opposite side, but it's not the arm.
Oh. Cause the right arm, which is on the left side, but it's not in the arm.
That wasn't really intense arguing. You draw for the left median. Yes, you are, you are correct.
Yes.
Left side.
I win. I'm the winner.
Your fear. Your patience.
Dad, I'm a winner, dad.
I lost.
Oh my gosh. I'm so upset Caitlin.
I get, I get this Lily, that you're a newcomer and you don't like to interact with your um CPT class, but if you would've came before, you would've known this is how we play.
I heard.
Actually, I was playing by myself before you guys came in. I was doing.
And you still lost Starla. I don't wanna hear this.
Alright, guys, little bitch, um, we will do this again uh next week as well, okay? But I'll post a link uh for this in your guys' course uh to refer to as well, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, guys. Alright. Have a good rest of your day.
You too, bye.
Bye.